Board meeting of March 6, 2025. In accordance for the Open Public Meetings Act, P.L., Public Law, 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment, Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant, professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into the microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you have completed your testimony.
Is the sheet there? Okay, just making sure.
You're up.
Wait, I didn't do the roll.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Cheryl Bethia.
Here.
Richard Prokanic.
Here.
Vaseem Fridas and Chairman Thomas asked to be excused this evening. Alan Rich.
Here.
Gary Rosenthal.
Here.
Robert Shepherd.
Here.
Faraz Khan.
Here.
Is that Faraz?
No, that was me because my thing was turned off.
Okay. Mike Thardy.
Here.
Kunal is on his way, you said? So I'll just mark him when he gets here. Chapendu Singh. Okay.
Good evening.
Can I have one of those things?
Use the mic.
Wait, one minute. Can I have one of those agendas? Wait, Bob, one minute, because we have to read that one is withdrawn because it was carried, okay?
Oh, yeah, right.
Okay. So NYSSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, ZBA 2400021. The applicant was seeking relief of condition concerning defense material on a previously approved application, ZBA 1600033, for property at 156 Cedar Grove Lane, Somerset, Block 424 dot 12, Lot 5.01 in the R40 zone. This matter was withdrawn without prejudice. Okay, Bob, now you can start.
Okay, then I'm going to call the first applicant. Jane Estefan, ZBA 2400006. See variances where the applicant has constructed in addition to the existing house in which modifications were made not previously approved at 435 Wheeler Place.
That is correct. Thank you. Edward P. Shammy Jr. appearing on behalf of the applicant.
Use the mic.
Appearing on behalf of the applicant, John Estefan, who's seated in the third row behind me. To my left is Frank Antisell, our engineer and planner, and he will be our first witness.
Hey, sir, raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this board is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you just repeat your name, spell your last name for the record, please?
Sure. It's Frank. Last name is spelled A-N-T-I-S-E-L-L.
Thank you.
Mr. Antisell, can you give us the benefit of your education, training, and certifications as an engineer and also as a planner?
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Sciences in Civil Engineering from Widener University. I have a Master's degree from Stevens Institute of Technology, and I've been a licensed professional engineer, testifying in the state of New Jersey since 1993. And I've testified before this board and also the planning board in Franklin and numerous other boards in the state as both an engineer and as a planner.
Okay, well, can you tell me what was your, the Master's degree got from Stevens? What was that in?
In management, engineering management.
Okay, and do you have any particular educational background in the planning field?
Yes, I've taken a number of planning courses, and I had to take the written planning exam. I was not grandfathered into the planning license.
So you're certified as a planner?
Yes.
Okay, that would have been important to say.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
We'll accept you.
And your license is current and good standing card.
Both of them are yes.
Okay. Mr. Antisell, can you describe the site for the board and explain what this application is all about?
Sure. I have a colorized rendering of the plan that was submitted to the board, and the plan contains...
If we're going to put it up on the screen, let's mark it as an exhibit, so we'll call this A1.
A1, okay, sure. And on the bottom half of the page is a survey from when Mr. Estefan bought the property. And the property contained a stone driveway, a one-and-a-half-story framed house, and a detached frame garage. This is on, this site is located on Wheeler Place. It's known as 435 Wheeler. It contains 0.5865 acres, and the court that you see here on here is from the tax map, and it's an unimproved street in the town. So access to this site, along with the neighboring property to the top of the page, is via the stone driveway. So our client and the neighbor share the stone driveway. Now, we also have a colorized version of the site as it currently exists. And again, Wheeler Place is here, and there is a stone access driveway that is used by the applicant to the north here, along with Mr. Estefan. The property is located in the R15 residential zone, and as Mr. Estefan applied for and received a building permits to build an addition to the house, the addition contained a, added a garage to the house. And during that time, he also reduced the size and moved the garage that was over the property line onto the property. So those were some of the changes that he did when he did that. And also, and as part of the house, there are four bulk variances that were, some of them were existing, and some of, and one is a new one. The three that were existing, one was the minimum rear yard setback, 50 feet is required. 18.7 was previously existing. The garage addition reduced that rear yard setback to 17.6 feet. The minimum rear yard for the detached garage structure previously was at 18.4 feet, and now, as constructed, is at 17.7 feet. And the side yard for the garage over here, previously the garage was 3.7 feet over the property line, and now it's 2.9 feet into the property. So it's still within the 10 feet required setback, so we're still here for a variance on that. The other variance that's new is the maximum impervious coverage. 30% is permitted by your ordinance, and 31.8% was previously existing, and as constructed with the improvements, 46.5% is what is out there right now.
46% impervious coverage?
46.5%, yes.
I have a couple of questions here. How are you showing the driveway on this particular screen here? Is it the gray?
The gray is the driveway, the driveway comes in, comes into his garage here, goes to the neighbor's house to the north, and also comes around the back of the house and comes over to the detached garage that he is now using as, basically a shed to house his lawn equipment. The other purpose of the gravel driveway is, there is a neighbor down here also, and the nearest fire hydrant is right over here. So in the past, when the neighbor had a fire, the fire trucks came in around the back of the house and over to the fire hydrant right here, the hookup. So what, one of the, you know, reasons for keeping the driveway going around the back of the house is to allow for fire access to the hydrant that is located on the court there.
And that court is a paved street.
That's a, correct, it's an unapproved paved street.
Okay, so what is the rear of the property? Am I looking at it in, it's to the, it's to the right on this?
The rear of the property is this.
Okay.
This is the rear of the house. The front door of the house is right here. We have pavers here, and we also have a porch that is here.
Yeah.
And I do have some pictures, which I can show you, which may help.
Well, I don't know if it can help. 46% is a lot, and I'm not so sure that I feel comfortable personally, I don't know the other people on this board, that I'm going to approve a 46% impervious coverage. And it doesn't seem to be any effort that's been made on the part of the applicant to reduce that amount of coverage. He's just taken what he had and put more down there. And I also don't have any understanding of how it is he could end up with permits to do this building, and yet with all of these variances that are out there. Are you planning on having him testify?
If the board has questions for him, we could have, yes, we could have him testify.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
So would you like me to show you some pictures of the property?
We might as well, sure.
So we might want to mark these as?
A2.
A2?
Yep.
This is a picture of the front of the house, taken from the start of the court area. This is a picture looking down the driveway at the house and the garage. This is a picture looking from the driveway to the brick walkway that goes up to the brick front porch.
That actually looks like cement, but okay.
I can zoom in. It's, it's pavers.
Okay, we don't need to do that.
Then we also have the grass area. The applicant planted a row of evergreens on the property line, and we have a couple pictures of the evergreens that were planted along the property line. And this is a picture of the applicant's house and the adjoining neighbor's house. And then here is just an aerial of the house, and we have the gravel driveway coming into the house.
So, Mr. Antisell, the point's been made by Mr. Shepherd that the degree of impervious coverage is higher than the board would like to see. Do you see areas where the applicant could reduce the impervious coverage without impairing the ability of emergency personnel to get around to the fire hydrant or to serve the neighbors or provide access also to the neighbor for his property?
The applicant could definitely reduce the amount of gravel in the back of the house. I mean, that would be, I think, an area, I don't know if he's willing to give up all of it, we can talk to him real quick, but I know we can definitely reduce the area gravel behind the house, which would make a big improvement. If, I mean, we could maybe take a quick break and talk to him about that.
Can we just back up a little bit? Now, why is it his responsibility to have a driveway for the fire truck? I mean, is, does he have, I mean, are there, I have no idea. I don't even know what, I don't even know what to ask.
I understand that, and, you know, it's not something that's typical. Typical, you don't have a lot of driveways that go around the house like this for emergency vehicles, and typically you have a paved street. So in this situation, we don't have a paved street, and, I mean, that's the way it was when the applicant bought it.
Is there an easement?
There's a, there's a common easement that he has with his neighbor, that they share that easement.
With his neighbor, okay.
Yes.
But not with the fire, okay. The driveway to the upper part of the picture, that goes to his neighbor's house, you said?
This goes to the neighbor's house.
So they share a driveway?
They share this driveway.
And that's the only driveway the neighbor has to get in and out of his property, is to go on somebody else's property?
Correct.
This is, yeah, okay.
So where's the fire hydrant again?
The fire hydrant is over in this corner.
How does that, why does the fire hydrant in that location, how's that related to the gravel behind the house?
It's our understanding that the fire company has come around the house, come around the garage, and there's also, the neighbor's driveway is right here, come down the neighbor's driveway to the fire hydrant to come out this way.
But if, but they have access to the fire hydrant by going from Wheeler down the court?
This is all gravel in here.
Yeah, exactly. So why do you need a driveway behind the house?
I can only let you know what we've been told.
And it doesn't even connect to, you said there's a driveway in that adjoining property, but they don't even connect, so what?
There was a connection there, and that's been removed.
I still don't understand what a driveway behind the house has to do with the fire hydrant in front of the house that has access to Wheeler.
Do you want to talk to John real quick?
Is the driveway a part of their property?
The driveway, this driveway is all on our property, yes. Yeah, can we have a couple minutes to talk to our client about removing more stone?
Sure, but when you come back, it would be, don't just tell me that we're going to do this. I need to know what the, what the new impervious coverage number would be. I also want to understand what he built, so it's fine for you to talk to him now, but I think I want to have the owner up here to answer some questions.
Okay, you can do that. Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll take a 10-minute recess. All right.
That's like the one time I don't want it.
That's water.
Is there glass or you for us?
No, glass, they got it. You have a glass? I keep, I keep losing this thing. I don't know. I don't know what's going on.
What are you doing?
I, I keep losing this. I keep losing. I don't know what's going on.
Evening, Neil. Are we ready to go back?
Yes.
Ready, ready to resume here? Okay.
We are ready to resume. Thank you for that time. Um, so af- after discussion with the applicant, there is a significant area of gravel that, um, that the applicant is prepared to remove, that Mr. Anticell will describe and approximate.
I don't have it. Well, the area that the applicant's willing to remove would be from the side of the garage and also all the gravel behind the house. So, I mean, it's a significant amount of the gray area. It would be all of this area here.
Okay, all right. I don't, can't really tell how much that is, but it's definitely gonna make a difference in the, in the number. Unfortunately, uh, you're not in a position to tell us exactly what the new number would be. I imagine that's a complicated computation to figure that out, Mark?
I mean, I could give you an approximate in a few minutes, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be just that.
I have a couple of more questions for the, for the applicant, so maybe we can ask him some ques- Would you like to ask him some questions first?
Um, we can start with your question, so we can get right to the concerns of the board.
Why do we swear, man? Sir, if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to be given before this board is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
Can you repeat your name and last name for the record, please?
Jean Estefan, uh, last name E.S.T.E.P.H.A.N.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Estefan, uh, can you tell me, uh, what happened when you went down to the, uh, the zoning office or the, the construction office to get permits to do the building of the house?
We applied all the application and we got the, all the permit. I built it as the, uh, inspector tell me to build what's in the blueprint. I didn't add one inch what the permit they gave me.
Okay, so, and how long ago did you do this?
I start, uh, one year before Corona, I think, twenty...
Nineteen, probably, huh?
Nineteen.
Yeah.
And take like almost three years to finish it because of the Corona.
Okay.
Uh, the COVID, yeah.
Yeah. Were, were you the one who did the construction?
No, I had a company, NTNT. Name of the company, they built it for me.
Okay, and exactly what it is that, that they built for you?
Uh, we left the foundation and half of the, the old house and we make addition. And we make second floor bigger.
Okay, uh, and also, did you build a garage onto that?
The attached garage is what is in the plan, yes.
Okay, all right. So, how did you end up coming down here? What, who, wh- when did, did someone complain about what you had built?
And nobody complained. I got all the certificate after I finished the co- construction. And after I receive a letter, uh, we have like overbuild. They take the sidewalk and the porch like as a, as a building. I didn't know porch and it was needing a permit, so I put porch in the front of the house and walkway is a stone.
Mm-hmm, and, and then, that was when they said you should have gotten, gone to the zoning board and gotten some variances?
Yes, that's why I call my attorney and I explain to him the situation. And we start with the engineer with all the stuff. It's taken like more, maybe two years, two years, and I have to get this meeting now.
Okay.
Let's get back to...
So, yeah, let me just-
Does anybody have any other questions?
Well, so, I believe there's two main things that occurred. I, I, I don't believe it was built exactly per the plan. Uh, the, the, my recollection is that the, the house, the, the house had been, uh, pre-existing non-conforming as far as the rear yard setback, and that the addition was built not exactly per the plans, um, and that the, the resulting rear setback is slightly smaller. Uh, there may have been other slightly smaller differences between what was submitted, what was approved as far as the house. The, the big issue, frankly, as far as a big delta, if you will, is the driveway. You know, the driveway is, they submitted one thing as far as what they were going to build, and they built a driveway that resulted in forty-six percent impervious. And that required a zoning permit. That, that's the, that's the, the main difference, and I thi- my recollection is the difference in the house is, yeah, I, it's order of magnitude existing, the previous setback, I think, was eighteen point seven for the rear setback, and now it's seventeen point six.
Right.
So, it's not a huge thing, but it is different nonetheless. It was pre-existing non-conforming, so they were allowed to build, and as long as they didn't make that worse. But now, when they built it, it was smaller, so that's why, that's one of the reasons why they have to come back to you, because the resulting rear yard setback is smaller than had previously existed.
Also, the side yard setback is smaller, but before they, they did anything, that garage was over the line.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's obviously an improvement, because there was an encroachment, and now there, they moved it.
Right.
It doesn't comply with the setback, but, you know.
Yeah. So, uh, my next question that I have for you is that if we look at, if we look at this, at your property, and we look at the, the rear of the house, wh- what is your, what is, what is the neighbor next to you?
What the ne- I have a neighbor in the north over there, and it was the same driveway it's now. Would, they use it and I use it. I didn't change anything in the driveway.
Right, the front part of the driveway, anyway. So, so, but what, what I'm asking is, what about to the right? You have a neighbor over to the right?
Yes, I have a neighbor.
Okay, so there, so the-
The neighbor, they don't use my back driveway. They have their own driveway.
Okay, all right.
Can I answer?
Sure.
His question. If, if you want, I get the blueprint, what I get the permit. So he can see like I build it as, I get permit from the Franklin Township. I didn't add anything after or before.
That, that's actually, we're, we're, we understand that lots of things could have happened to end up with something built that was slightly different than the plans you had. The, you didn't build it yourself, so the people who did the construction for you may have, may have missed something.
No, believe me, uh, the inspectors, they're very tough, and they come maybe, every step, they come check everything. And after I build it, they come take pictures of the measurement, and I have the blueprint. Any, any time you want, you can send anybody to check the measure, measurement. If I build it the same way, I get the permit. I didn't add nothing.
Now, okay, do we have any other board questions?
I do have one additional question over here.
Yes.
So, the back driveway, the only one who uses that is you.
Yes.
None of your neighbors?
No.
And when you built that, that was, you didn't, you didn't have any issues with the, um, the amount of impervious?
The same way it is now, it was before. I didn't change nothing. Even from the back of the driveway, I left it as it was before. I didn't change it.
He didn't change it.
And the garage in the back, I don't use it for car. So I don't use the driveway.
Right.
Anyway, in the back, I don't use driveway.
We got your garden improvements.
And now you're willing to remove, you're willing to remove all of the gravel from the side of the garage, all the way into the back where the detached garage is.
Yes.
Right?
Okay, um, unless there are additional questions from the board.
Yeah, I, I, can we put the other picture back up? I still, I'm, I'm still hung up on that driveway up. You're saying your neighbor, that's the only driveway your neighbor has to get in and out of his property?
Yes.
Is it allowed to have, to have a driveway that somebody else uses to get to their?
Well, I mean, in, in, my, my guess is this is, you know, an old situation. The houses have been there for a long time. You know, what rights that person has over it is, you know, more of a, maybe a legal question. Typically, yeah, there, there are situations where houses, people have, get, gain access to their house over somebody else's property, and usually, there's an ease, access easement in place that allows that. That's, you know, if it was a situation like that, we would make sure that there was an access easement, you know.
Because if he's-
Maybe Brian could answer what rights that person has. My guess is maybe it's been there for fifty, sixty, seventy years, and that's just the way it is.
I mean, maybe they do have a recorded easement, too.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a easement, uh, me, between, it was before I bought, I bought this property, and after I bought the property, I want to renew the easement. The lawyer tell me you have to make a new easement. It was the same, exactly the same.
Okay.
And what I hear about the story of all this land, it was for one person. So he divided three, four lots. He, uh, give one for the son after he sold it. I don't know, maybe you had the, you know the story more than me, but I know all this land was for one person. That's why you, you can see the easement between two houses. The one in the back, he, he doesn't have a driveway, like a legal driveway, it's a stone driveway, the same.
I have a question for you, Mr. Estefan. What was the impervious coverage when you acquired the property?
Before I built it?
Yeah, before you added this, when you acquired the property?
Really, I don't know about the measurement and all the stuff.
I can answer the question to you.
Sure.
It was at thirty-one point eight percent.
Okay.
Yeah, that was with the, that's with the, the gar- the, the driveway before.
Correct.
Okay, and now, there's been changes to the house, and has the driveway been expanded? Is that really what happened?
Yes, the driveway's been expanded.
Oh, okay, all right.
And, yep, and I calculated the area of stone in the back here that would be removed, and that's roughly three thousand square feet.
Okay, what does that do for us?
Uh, yeah, that's basically what I had, just about three thousand square feet, so.
What does that reduce the percentage to? Do we know?
It would be in the mid thirties.
Okay, all right.
I, I have a question, if, if you don't mind. Um, you have an overhead wire running through the corner of the property. On the plan, there's a note that says possible utility easement. Is it possible you built the house within that easement?
Okay, can I answer that?
Yeah.
Yes. It was before my neighbor in the north, he have his electricity, and my electricity coming from Hamilton Street. The cable coming in the forest in Hamilton, over my land, going to the, my neighbor. It was like this before and it's still there.
No, no, I, I understand that. I mean, I didn't think it was like a high tension wire that was serving an entire neighborhood. My concern is, on your plan that you prepared, you identified two easements, potential, and none of them are depicted.
Well, since there is a utility pole that's on our property, that serves both our property, and then there's an overhead line going to the neighbor's house, there, typically, the utility company gets a letter from the owner of the property stating that they don't have an issue serving the neighbor's property with the electric. So, there is a letter agreement. There is no written easement that we have been able to find. But, again, we're allowing the electric service to go across our property to service the neighbors.
Yeah, but with part of that initial agreement with the utility company, you're saying you're giving them rights to your land, and there's typically some sort of width associated with that.
Well, usually with that letter that says that, is if, within thirty days, they, if we tell them that we want the pole removed, within thirty days, they have to remove that pole.
I'm just confused by the language on your plan to say possible easement.
That, that came from our cert, the survey that we had done by the surveyor, so I would have to check with him to get more information on that. But, again, that is just for the utility to provide electric service to the neighbor.
And what about the driveway easement?
The driveway easement's a recorded document.
Is it depicted on the plan?
Um, I don't believe there's meets and bounds for the driveway easement. It talks about just a gravel driveway.
The easement itself doesn't provide meets and bounds. It just says the gravel driveway.
The document that I saw, yes. It talked about a gravel driveway that was shared by the two owners of the property.
Okay.
All right, that's all my questions.
So, I, I have a updated calculation. So, if the, what's submitted indicated a impervious coverage of forty-six point five, which based on that size of that property means that plan shows ninety-three hundred square feet of impervious coverage, and the testimony was that they can remove three thousand, so that would bring it down to sixty, sixty-three hundred fifteen, and that would result in an impervious coverage of about thirty-two percent.
Thirty-two?
Yep.
Okay.
Basically, what we heard was the pre-existing condition.
Right, right. Okay, does, uh, is there anyone, it's, it's, since we've now had board questions, we invite anyone from the public who'd like to get up and ask some questions, to come over to the microphone over here, and, uh, you'll be sworn in to ask your questions of either the owner or the architect. Seeing no one coming forward, I'm gonna close the public section of the, of the hearing. The, at this point, do we have, and, does anyone on the board like to make any comments at this point?
I, I just have one more question. We, we didn't talk about trees. Uh, there were two thousand square feet of trees that were removed during construction. Uh, are we gonna do anything with them?
Yes, we, we went out and did a, a sampling like, um, Mr. Healy requested, and we came up with a calculation that requires twenty-seven replacement trees, and we've talked about that with the owner, and the owner is willing to plant those trees.
Perfect.
Along, on the property, along, along the boundary, and also up in this green area, and also in this green area, and now that we're removing the gravel, it can also be planted in the back of the house.
Good, fantastic. Thank you.
And the, um, the pre, the, with the decrease now in impervious, I don't believe we need the drywells that we were proposing?
No, I don't think so.
I, I, what I would, what I would sug- I can't, I think you're right, but I'm not gonna do that on the fly. I mean, the, the bottom line is, if you show that the before and after is less than a thousand square feet, then the ordinance says you don't have to do it.
Okay.
So, it is what it is, basically, as far as that. So I'd say, provide those calculations, you know, assuming the board-
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. If it's below a thousand, it's below a thousand.
Yep.
Anything further, counselor?
Uh, nothing else.
Okay, um, I'm gonna offer a, um, a resolution. Uh, I move that we grant, uh, Jean, is that's what you said, the way you say?
Jean.
Jean.
Jean Estefan.
Uh, Estefan, um, a, the variances needed to, uh, conform to the construction that's already been done on the property, uh, subject to his removing all of the gravel driveway that runs from the side of the house all the way down along the back of the house, uh, for a total of approximately three thousand square feet. Uh, in order for this, uh, uh, variance to be, um, uh, completed, we do need, I think, some more information, uh, from, uh, the applicant as to, uh, either some sort of a, a map showing where the gravel's gonna be removed, or some other kind of way to, to do that. Um, but other than that, uh, I think we're, we're, okay, how, uh, Mr. Hack, how, how would we do that?
Well, that's, that's gonna be, uh, post-approval.
Sorry, post-approval submission?
Oh, okay.
Right.
Right.
They'll, uh, provide the calculations, and if the drywall isn't needed, it's not needed, as Mr. Healy said, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, they, they have a, a plan prepared, so their engineer will have to update their plan. Uh, and I would suggest that the motion, um, include the variances for the setbacks indicated in the TRC report, and, um, I think it should also include, we've mentioned, a figure of thirty-two percent, uh, impervious coverage, so I think that, recommend that that be included in the motion.
And a condition of approval is the replacement trees as well.
Right.
Yep, and, and we'll show those on the plan.
Can you add, uh, Mr. Healy's comments regarding the, uh, the granting of the additional variances? Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Can you call for a vote? No, nobody's second.
I'll second. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanik?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Mike, uh, is it Michael Doherty? Yeah, yeah, Michael Doherty?
Yes.
And Kunal Akir?
Yes.
Okay, motion's carried. You're all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Can I just shake the hand of Mr. Rosenthal? I haven't seen him in about forty years.
How you doing, man?
Great to see you.
Good to see you.
I was his keyboard player for the Junior Miss Pageant.
That's right. A long time ago.
Is your father John Shamie?
He's my cousin.
Your cousin? Okay.
He was a great piano player. You're welcome.
Okay, the next matter is IDI Logistics, ZBA twenty-four zero 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 one zero.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, excuse me, my name is Paul Conchatori, attorney at Price, Meese, Schulman, and Darmenio, representing the applicant, IDI Logistics LLC. Um, this application relates to the property one dash three, Executive Drive. Um, we are here, and, and IDI is the contract purchaser for that property. Um, we are here this evening for a use variance and associated bulk, a couple of other additional bulk variances only. So, in other words, there is not a site plan being requested to be approved this evening. So, I appreciate that, uh, a bifurcated use variance application is certainly unusual. Um, I just want you to know, it's, it's not related to any development or zoning issue. It's purely an internal corporate kind of mechanism that resulted in this. But, uh, having said that, um, the application submission included a fully engineered site plan. So, in other words, the site plan that has been submitted is exactly, hoping for an approval this evening, is exactly the site plan that would be filed promptly to be before this board again for a preliminary and final site plan approval. So, obviously, there's a separate application, separate record. Your professionals will be reviewing the site plan. Whatever questions are asked related to the site plan, you know, you can be asked, again, different, additional, but what it means is, uh, this evening, to the extent it's helpful for you to understand the site plan in evaluating the use variance and the bulk variance, you, we're here to provide whatever level of detail you need, because we have the actual site plan prepared, and therefore, to the extent you find it helpful to have answers to certain of those questions, understanding you're going to have a whole nother proceeding for the site plan, we're here to be able to do that for you. So, I just wanna make that clear. Um, with that as background, um, the application proposes a use which is obviously prohibited, which is a warehouse, uh, distribution logistics facility at this location. Besides, uh, and, and I would say that you'll hear, and I, I think I wanna give you a little bit of a, a more detailed overview, because I think it's helpful when you hear the witnesses, you can kind of place my overview in here as it, as it proceeds. Um, this, this application, we think, relates to a property that's particularly suitable for this, this use. It's in a non-residential section of Franklin. Its proximity to Route two eighty-seven and the traveling distance to the interchanges of Route two eighty-seven are are very close. The building, as you'll hear, is appropriately sized for the, for the property. Um, and with, with due respect, the property itself is outdated. It has vacant office buildings on it, so it, it is kind of yearning for a redevelopment, and we think this is an appropriate redevelopment, uh, all things considered, for this particular property. Now, besides, um, the use of variance, uh, there are a couple of bulk variances that are also requested for relief this evening. One of them relates, which I'm sure are probably familiar, one of them relates to the, uh, depth of the loading berth. This is one I know, having appeared before Franklin's planning board and other, on other occasions. This is a, a variance that appears in virtually every single application. Um, you'll hear the testimony that, um, it does not meet the standard in the ordinance, but it is, what is proposed is essentially an industry standard that is used and, and is appropriate, so you'll, that, there is that variance. There also is a C variance related to the width of the truck driveway. Um, the proposal in the site plan actually has a wider driveway than what is permitted in the ordinance, but you'll hear, we think it's appropriate, um, to have a little wider, and we think it's, it only adds to the site circulation, site safety, et cetera. The remaining two ordinance, uh, variances, excuse me, are ones that, you know, I would characterize as technical variances, or almost form over substance. And, and why I characterize it that way is, one of them relates to, uh, car and truck parking in the front yard, where the frontage that is, is the front yard relates to Route two eighty-seven. The ordinance establishes Route two eighty-seven as a road, as if it was a street right on the property, but obviously, as a common sense kind of thing, the, the impact that would be, look to be avoided by no front yard parking of trucks, has, you know, obviously, not a lot of applicability to Route two eighty-seven with cars driving, you know, fifty-five, sixty-five, seventy miles an hour. That is a variance. I consider it, you know, as you'll hear the testimony, my characterization's something that's technical, but it is, it is there. The other variance, uh, similarly, I believe, is, is technical for a different reason, or almost form of a substance for a different reason. It relates to truck and car parking in the front yard, as well as loading in the front yard, with the street being Executive Drive. Why is that something that I consider technical or form of a substance? Executive Drive, although being a street, essentially functions as a private driveway. It on one end connects to Davidson, the other end is a cul-de-sac. There is no other access off of Executive Drive except this property. So, in other words, it functions as a private driveway. If you are on Executive Drive, the only place you can go is this subject property. So, because of that, um, the, the parking in the front yard, the loading in the front yard does not have the same impact, or is not redressing the same- not have the same impact, or is not redressing the same thing that a normal ordinance provision, where appropriately, you don't want the traveling public or citizens of Franklin to be driving down the road, and now they're stopped at a light, and here, to their right, is a property with trucks right on, right on the street, and so on. Here, the only people who will be on Executive Drive are actually coming to this property. So it is, it is something that, you know, makes sense that the variance, although required, does not apply the way it would normally apply. So we think those are ones that are characterized more as technical variances, you'll hear the planner and our engineer talk about them, but I wanted to kind of set that for you. Also, I did wanna also note that in relation to the site plan, because we had to file the site plan and all outside agency approvals in order to get a completeness to be here before you this evening, we have made a lot of progress on our outside approvals. We actually already have a NJDEP flood hazard permit for the site plan, and we're also well along with the DRCC and the county as it relates to the approvals we need there. I say that again, understanding there's a whole separate site plan coming, hoping for an approval this evening, I say that just to give you the context that, you know, this is a project and a plan that has already, you know, kind of advanced in terms of approval. So you're looking at those variances, and for that reason, we think it is something that is particularly suitable, as you'll hear. The last thing I do wanna touch on is the master plan efforts that Franklin has been on, as I'm sure you're all aware, has been, has been going through for the last year, year and a half. Franklin hired independent planning and traffic consultants who, for the last year or so, have done an exhaustive analysis of, in particular, the BI zone and warehouse use in the BI zone. They've looked at all of Franklin, they've looked at all the constructed and operating warehouse projects, they've looked at ones that have approved and not constructed, looked at ones in the pipeline. Suffice to say, they've done the full analysis. And at a hearing on the 30th of January, they summarized their conclusions, which it seems like will then be memorialized in a report to the planning board, and would eventually result in zoning changes which would make certain warehouses conditional uses in the BI zone. I say all that to say this, we've, part of our analysis, and you'll hear, have looked at the standards that were presented as the conclusion of that analysis for the BI zone, and among them, they created a, what they called a medium intensity light industrial warehouse use, which had 10 criteria to it, in order to comply with the conditional use standards. We have evaluated our project to those standards, and we comply with every one of them, except for the little glitch on Executive Drive, where it's essentially a public road, but, excuse me, but it functions as a private driveway. So the size of the building, the ratio of the loading docks, the location, the proximity to 287, the floor area ratio, the parking, the height of the building, all of the criteria that are established are satisfied, but for that, you know, the glitch with Executive Drive.
Are you, hello?
Yeah.
Are you gonna be able to tell us what the height of, not you, but one of your witnesses will tell us what the height of the building is?
Oh, sure. As I said, we can answer whatever questions you like, yes. So I say that because it's, it's obviously about particular suitability, and what we have is a year-long process where that process resulted in this, in almost the same project that we have before you, which we designed prior to hearing on January 30th, what the answer was. The last thing I would say is that the issue of the executive drive, which functions essentially as a private driveway, your engineer's report did mention vacating that street, because it only serves this property. So I would just say this, that we are certainly looking into that. There are a lot of, as I'm sure Mr. Hack can identify, a lot of legal criteria and procedures that relate to vacating a street. I can tell you that if all of those things are compliance, it would, my client would be derelict, they're not vacating the street, because it only serves their property. So we would certainly move ahead to try and do that, and that would only make it more conforming and really eliminate this glitch that I've identified as it relates to 287 and Executive Drive. However, we would want an approval or an evaluation of this based on the record of granting the variances, because we wouldn't want it to be a condition to do the vacation, because standing here, I don't know legally, there's a lot of intricacies, whether it's allowed, I don't know how much time it'll take. So certainly, that is high on the list of something we want to do, but we wanna rest on our record here for these variances I described, which you'll hear all about, for a vote, hopefully positively, this evening. We'll go for it, but we can't have it as a condition, essentially, I think, is what I'm trying to say. So with that as a general background, I have several witnesses this evening. I have Justin Burns, who's the representative, he's the market officer of real estate in this region. I have Alex Lemay from Boulder Engineering, who can provide site plan engineering or engineering perspective. Claudia Brita is the architect, we think it's helpful to very briefly just show what kind of building we would be building. Betsy Dolan can provide traffic engineering testimony. And lastly, and most importantly, Paul Greigel, our planner, will summarize all of the very important planning testimony. So that's a lot, but I think it was helpful to kind of give you an overview, and unless there's anything procedural, I can get started with my first witness.
Can I ask the counsel a question?
Sure.
You had mentioned vacating Executive Drive. If that were to occur, would you take ownership of the entire roadway?
Yes, and that's one of the things that, why I say it can't be a condition, is because, you know, it looks and appears from what we've identified so far, that the entirety of the street is located on our property. So in that case, we would get all of it. You're probably referring to the idea that when there are two different owners, it gets split down the middle. But at this point, and that's one of the reasons I say we have to look into it, among other legal details, but that is, that is one of the items, yes. Anything else?
No, I think you're on. I'll have our first witness.
Justin.
Sir, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give before this board is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
Can you please state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Justin Burns, B-U-R-N-S.
Thank you.
And you're doing great with the microphone, buddy. That was leaning into it.
That was a good catch. Wanted to make sure everyone can hear me.
That's...
Mr. Burns, could you provide some detail on your title, your position, and your familiarity with this project?
Sure. So again, my name's Justin Burns, I'm the Northeast Market Officer for IDI Logistics. Essentially, I am responsible for acquiring new and managing the existing projects that we have within the region. IDI, we've been working on this project for approximately two years, and there's obviously a lot of hard work that's gone into it, so we're certainly excited to be presenting to the board.
Great. And just for the benefit of the board, briefly, maybe you can give some detail on IDI, who they are, other projects in New Jersey, or in this, or in Franklin?
Absolutely. So IDI Logistics, we are a leading investor developer of logistics real estate. The company's been around for approximately 36 years. We have developed about 220 million square feet of industrial real estate across North America for approximately 700 customers. In addition to that, we own approximately 4 million square feet of warehouses in New Jersey currently. And I mean, from an IDI perspective, again, we've been doing this for a long time, the company takes a great deal of pride in the buildings that we construct and deliver. We value environmental sustainability, which is also why our, all of our projects are solar-ready and are LEED certified, and, you know, we develop these buildings to stand the test of time. For the most part, we develop these as forever hold assets.
Great. And just as to this property, we'll hear a lot from our expert witnesses, but from your expertise as real estate developer and acquiring of site, what is it about this site that makes it appropriate in your mind, and why it was targeted for you as something that made sense for a warehouse distribution?
Yeah, so I think first and foremost, and this is consistent, we do own another property in Somerset, 195 and 215 Davidson. So similar to Executive Drive, this is a redevelopment and a repositioning of what is a non-performing asset or property. The office buildings obviously are currently vacant, and our plan is to redevelop them into a Class A best-in-class warehouse. So the redevelopment component is something that we've targeted throughout New Jersey for non-performing property. In addition to that, the warehouse that we would like to develop here would obviously be consistent with property throughout the neighborhood. In Davidson, proximate to 287, much of the property there is commercial use, it's warehousing, it's office, so we feel like this, this building would fit within the neighborhood well. And then I would say, third, and certainly very important to us, is proximity to a major interstate highway system. Obviously, we develop these generally on a speculative basis, and we need to attract tenants to lease the buildings, and having the ability for trucks and cars to essentially directly access the site off of a major interstate highway system without traversing residential is of great importance. So that's a critical component for the site as well. And then I would say, lastly, the fact that there's city sewer and water is also, of course, important.
And obviously, we'll hear it, but just for the record, just, can you just confirm the size of the building, and maybe what you feel is, is your judgment on that being an appropriate size and configuration for the property?
Sure. Yeah, so the building that we're proposing here is 212,500 square feet. It's a single-side load building, which means, for those that do not know, there's loading on one side of the building. We will be developing this on, as I said previously, a speculative basis, meaning we will not have a tenant identified prior to starting construction.
Now, let's, I'm trying to jump in with a couple more questions on that issue.
Sure.
212,000 square feet doesn't mean anything to me. How many stories is this building?
It'll be one story.
One story. And how, what is the headspace on the inside of the building? How tall is it?
So our architect can certainly do a more eloquent job than I can, but I-
That's okay, that's why I want you to tell me.
Absolutely, absolutely. So generally speaking, a modern warehouse is anywhere between 36 and 40 clear on the inside, and will generally be between 45 and 50 feet for total height of the building.
50 feet, so that would mean that it's four stories high.
And, well, maybe we, maybe we just have our engineer answer that question, but I guess it's, yeah, I wouldn't, if you're able to answer, otherwise, we could have Alex.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, certainly Alex can answer the question, again, more eloquently than I, but a warehouse, I mean, the most important thing for a modern warehouse is clear height, right? Because generally, most of these, the tenants that occupy these buildings are racking. And so the more efficient that a tenant can rack, the better for the tenant and the better for the use. So no warehouse that's being developed across the country would be below 36 clear as a modern warehouse. I mean, quite frankly, a warehouse that's being developed that is less than that height would be, becoming functionally obsolete.
And why do you say that?
Because of the clearance and the cubic. So the ability to store a lot of product in a warehouse is obviously valuable for a tenant, because they're paying rent on this property, and the more efficiently they can operate within the property, the better, essentially.
Okay. I've been around a while, and the past couple years, and actually more than that, maybe the, almost the past 10 years, there's been a proliferation of these warehouse buildings. What happened in industry that suddenly caused the need for all this additional warehouse space?
Yeah, I would, I would say it's a multitude of things. Obviously, e-commerce had a significant impact, and then also COVID, right? I think a lot of us are probably ordering quite a few things, quite a few more things online than we previously did. So that's certainly a component, and to your point, that resulted in warehouse sprawl in many states. I think something that we've been, we've really, we've been hyper-focused on is developing warehouses in locations that make sense, which is why, you know, again, Davidson, 195 and 215 Davidson down the street, it's approximately a mile and a half from an interstate highway system, and you're not proximate to any residential. And same thing with this property, I mean, it's, you're on an interstate highway system, which for a tenant looking to locate here will be critical, and it's why we're attracted to this property.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a few more here, but certainly, if anybody has any so far, let's do that.
I have one. Is it anticipated only one tenant, or the possibility to subdivide and have multiple tenants? Yeah, so generally, when we develop a property, we do wanna develop it with the most flexibility, so in terms of demising. So the way that we've laid it out is, this building could accommodate three tenants, but we feel that it will most likely only be one single tenant that occupies the building.
Anything else?
And will this be cold storage, kind of?
No, this will, I mean, it'll likely be ambient. Obviously, if there was a tenant that needed cold storage, we would consider that use, but most likely, it'll be ambient dry storage.
So, anything else before I continue?
Keep going.
Okay. So just in terms of the relief that's requested, there was a comment in one of the review reports about signage. If you can confirm whether the intention is to conform to the signage, or are you looking for any signage variances?
No, we will not be seeking a signage variance, we will comply with the ordinance.
Okay, great. There was mention of the variance for the depth of the loading berth. Obviously, we'll have expert testimony, but maybe you can provide some context of the size that we're proposing as it relates to the ordinance and its appropriateness, et cetera.
Sure, yeah. 130 feet is standard, industry standard for a warehouse, I forget the terminology we use here, but we essentially call it truck court. I would say that's consistent across the US, and certainly, it's consistent with the rest of our portfolio in New Jersey, and consistent with what we had approved at 195 and 215 Davidson down the street.
Great. And related to that, there's also a variance for the width of the truck driveway, 36 is what's established in the ordinance, ours is a little wider at 40.6, maybe you can provide some detail on that, too?
Yeah, I would certainly, I would ask Alex Lemay to provide-
Which he will.
More detailed rationale there, but essentially, it's slightly wider, and that was just due to making sure that we had safe truck flow on the site, and that's why it's slightly wider than what you guys generally have here.
Okay. Last thing, we had talked about, briefly about vacating Executive Drive, perhaps just for the record, you can establish, I assume that's something you would like to do, if it's allowed, but maybe you can just give the board just for the record?
Absolutely, yeah. If, obviously, there's some more due diligence that we need to do, but we would absolutely proceed and formalize that process to vacate the road, if possible.
Right, okay. You mentioned solar-ready, maybe you can confirm for the record, will this building be solar-ready?
This asks, or this building will be solar-ready. All of our buildings across the United States or North America are all built to be solar-ready. It's generally sized based on the tenant, so typically, the solar doesn't go on the building until a tenant has signed a lease, but the roof will be, will be able to accommodate a solar grid.
And lastly, you mentioned LEED certification. Again, confirming for the record, this building, you will be seeking LEED certification for this construction?
Correct. Again, IDI, we are always looking to find new ways to build in a more sustainable way and add sustainable elements to our buildings. So LEED certification is obviously, it's a commercial certification, and it's a point system where you can, you know, you get a LEED certification, and then you get silver and gold and platinum, so we will pursue the highest level of LEED certification that we can.
I have no idea what you were just talking about.
So LEED certification- Yeah, so LEED certification is a, is a system of standards for, you know, sustainability, environmental benefits. So there's a system set up where there's a point system, where if you integrate certain energy saving or other benefits into your building, you get certified, and if you have enough points, you can be certified, silver, gold, platinum. So it's something that's generally considered environmentally friendly, sensitive, beneficial, so it's something that, you know, people look to to see, hey, are you doing that? So that, that's what it is. It's generally a standard, not all developers proceed the way IDI does, but that's, that's what it is.
I would just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
At this point, do you have a tenant in mind?
No tenant identified at this time. We generally find that you won't find a tenant until you start construction. We generally find that you won't find a tenant until you start construction.
Those are all the questions I have for this witness.
Just one more thing. It looks like the property now has three office buildings on it?
That's correct.
And how big are those office, how tall are they?
Our engineer is coming next, he can tell you.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize. I don't know, I don't know the answer off the top of my-
As long as he doesn't mesmerize me here.
No, he's actually very friendly and will speak very simply.
Okay, good, thanks. Yeah. My main man here took care of-
That's good. Can I hire him?
All right.
Great. Anything else? Okay.
Not for this witness, but we still have to now open it to the public.
Yes, thank you.
And are there, is there anyone here in the, here that would like to speak? If you would, sir, please come up to the microphone here.
And Mr. Chair, just to be clear, this is for questions for the testimony that was just provided?
That's right.
So-
Not to make a statement-
No, questions.
Questions.
So my name is Brian Gess, and I represent the Delta Hotel, which is directly across the street from your property. And some of the concerns that we have as the business owner of the hotel is, one, aesthetics of the building, right? Because we are in the business to sell weddings, and we have a large backyard that we do outside of Ben's Or. So we are concerned that green space, what the current buildings have now is appropriate, right, for the neighborhood? And we are concerned that a large cement-looking building is going to disrupt our business from a wedding and social aspect. We are also concerned that noise from constant truck behind, we already have complaints through the hotel.
Now, see, you're giving a statement and you're telling us your story.
So I'm asking questions as-
Got to ask a question. You haven't asked any yet.
Is this building going to be operating 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
Yes, the building will be operating 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in terms of the allowable, what's allowable. Ultimately, I can't speak to how the tenant's going to operate, because we don't have a tenant identified. I would also just add to your earlier point, if you look at what's currently there, it's three vacant office buildings. I was on the site today, and there are beer cans and lots of things scattered throughout the site. So I think hopefully, when you see what our architect is going to present here, I think hopefully you'll find that it's actually going to be a pretty significant aesthetic improvement.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, these buildings have been emptied for several years, right? I think three, four years now that these buildings have been emptied, and they know they have not been maintained by the current ownership or the previous ownership, right? So that has been something that we have addressed with them, because we have made contact with the former owner of the property. But going back to your statement of this building is going to be operated 24 hours a day, seven days a week, right? As the hotel operator, right, we get reprieve on the weekends from traffic on Davidson Avenue, because everything on the other side of 287 is typically warehouse, industrial, outside of the other hotels that are on Davidson Avenue. So we get reprieve from traffic on Davidson Avenue. So our concern is obviously the volume of noise that's going to be 24 hours a day, seven days a week, right? We already have the volume from 287. That is just 24 hours a day, seven days a week, right? So we are concerned about that with an operation that's going to be 24 hours a day, obviously affecting our business on the weekends with what's going on in the backyard, right? There is also a traffic light at the corner of Executive Drive.
Remember, you're asking questions now.
Right. So if you're taking ownership of the Executive Drive driveway, how is that going to affect traffic in and out of my parking lot?
Mr. Chair, let's just, can you, you have other people that are going to be speaking, right? Can you explain? And the reason I'm doing this is so that you can frame your questions, because there is going to be, so who else, who else are you going to be presenting?
We have a site plan engineer, we have an architect, we have a traffic engineer and a planner. So what I was trying to do, I didn't want to interrupt you, was to say, I would sit and listen, because what you'll find is that, and I know you keep mentioning 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but again, this is what every single warehouse does in the entire state. And it is not, this does not mean, and I don't want to speak to it, I'm talking as an attorney, not a witness, but it doesn't mean that there's constantly activity on the outside of the building 24 hours a day, it's going on inside. So, you know, so let's just say that. Plus, plus, what I'm saying is that I would want you to hear, for example, the impervious is going down, we're actually removing it, so there'll be more open space. So what I'm saying is, and you'll see the attractiveness of the building, so I would suggest, listen and hear and ask specific questions.
This is the first time that we've been notified that this building is going to-
Of course, sure.
Right, and this is our first opportunity-
It's the right time, yes.
It's our opportunity to voice our concerns.
What is it, what is the name of the hotel?
The Delta Hotel of Imary.
Oh, okay.
110 Davidson, which is directly across the street from-
Right, and so those are things that, you know, obviously, you know, we can talk about and you can hear, but obviously, there's the process, so, you know. But I would suggest to listen, and obviously-
Will you have pictures?
Oh, of course, we have multiple exhibits.
Maybe I am a little premature, but-
So, yeah, and you'll, sir, you'll have the opportunity, you'll have the opportunity after each person presents to ask that person questions, and at the end, whatever statements you have to make to the board, you can make your statements at that point.
Great, appreciate your time, thank you.
Bill Connell, 25 Spring Street. Is that on?
I think so.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So you're planning this warehouse with no tenant, so it's kind of like speculation, like, you know, build it and they will come. So my question to you is, how long will it take you, how long do you need a tenant for to get your return in investment, and what do you normally charge per square feet?
Well, before he even, obviously, the economics is not something that we would put on the record and let Justin add.
There's got to be a rule of thumb.
Yeah, that's not something that we would get into here.
No, okay, thank you.
Seeing no further any other people that would like to ask any questions, I'm going to close the public portion of this witness's testimony and ask the attorney handling the matter, bring his next witness forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, he's coming, I could tell you, this is Alex Lomé from Bolo Engineering. He's our project site plan engineer.
And he's going to put some pictures up on those screens, right?
He has many pretty, pretty pictures, yes, many, many.
Okay.
And he's very straightforward in terms of his summary, so I think he'll be good.
Mr. Lomé, if she can raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about the gift before this board is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just repeat your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Sure, it's Alex Lomé, L-O-M-E-I.
Thank you.
Mr. Lomé, can you please provide the board a brief summary of your credentials, education, prior experience appearing before this board or other boards in Franklin, et cetera?
Sure. Again, my name is Alex Lomé. I graduated with a bachelor's in science from the University of Delaware. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 2016. I'm a senior project manager with Bowler Engineering, with an office located at 30 Independence Boulevard, Suite 200 in Moore, New Jersey. I've testified in front of over 20 boards in New York and New Jersey, and I've been in front of the Franklin Township Planning Board a couple years back as well.
Well, then, that's sufficient for us. You accept it as an expert witness here.
Thank you. And I'm going to make this easy, Alex. Why don't you provide the board with an overview of, from a site plan engineering perspective, things that are relevant for purposes of our use variance and other bulk variance, summarizing what you've done and what your conclusions are.
Sure. I'd like to just start with the existing conditions for the site. I'm having trouble with that screen.
Oh, I thought that was the existing condition, sorry.
No signal. Should I try to unplug it and replug it in?
Sure.
The old reboot?
My guess it's on.
It's on there, okay. I'll try to give it one more try. Got two out of four. Okay.
Okay.
I apologize for that. I'd like to just start with the existing conditions and what you have on screen.
Mr. Conchatori, I know this is part of your submission, but since we're putting on the screen, we'll mark it.
I'll absolutely mark the exhibits as we go through.
Yeah, this will be A1, okay?
Correct. So this is the aerial exhibit prepared by our office. It's dated June 27, 2023. I'll mark it as Exhibit A1, and north is to the top of the page. I'm going to zoom in a little bit, and I apologize if I make anybody nauseous while I zoom in and the image loads. The site is identified, the tax map is block 469 lots, 1.03, 1.04, and 1.07, and as 1, 2, 3, Executive Drive. We have Davidson Avenue to the east of the site with the hotel beyond. We have Executive Drive to the north with the cultural center beyond that. We have I-287 to the south with some industrial uses beyond that. And we also have a cemetery to the west with single-family residential beyond the cemetery further to the west. The site is approximately 18.33 acres. It's situated in the BI zone, which we've already noted is where warehouse is not a permitted use. There are currently three vacant office buildings on the site. I know the question came up about the number of stories. The two front, I'll say front, closer to Davidson Avenue, office buildings are four stories. The one closer to the rear is about five stories, looks to have some under-story car parking as well. The buildings are approximately, from a footprint perspective, 20,000 square feet each, so, you know, multiply that by the number of stories for each building, and that'll give you the kind of the general gross floor area for each building. And then the existing condition, there are three separate accesses from Executive Drive, one for each of the respective office buildings. So I'm going to move to the proposed conditions, and I'll bring up my next exhibit, which we'll mark as Exhibit A2. This is the site rendering exhibit prepared by our office, dated January 31, 2025, and north is to, I'll say the top of the page, but it's skewed a little bit to the top left. The development, and I'm going to zoom in on this as well, so we can see the site a little bit more clearly. I apologize, it's loading. The development proposes a 212,500-square-foot warehouse with associated loading docks, driveways, car parking spaces, as well as stormwater and utility infrastructure, as well as some existing landscaping and a good amount of proposed landscaping as well. Just before I go too far into the proposed conditions for the site, I do want to speak to the master plan reexamination that the township is currently going through, and Mr. Conchatori had touched on it, but some of the conclusions that have been drawn towards a medium-intensity light industrial use, and the way that the reexamination of the master plan and the conclusions that have been drawn are defining that, are a warehouse between 150,000 and 400,000 square feet, which this proposed warehouse meets, and having less than one loading dock per 5,000 square feet. So with the calculation, that would be less than 42 loading docks, and the proposed building will have 39 loading docks. So this fits with the reexamination of the master plan, the conclusions drawn, it fits a medium, what they would define as a medium-intensity light industrial use. In that report, or in the conclusions that were drawn for the reexamination of the master plan, there were 10 conditions that they established for this to be, for a warehouse that fits the criteria to be a permitted use.
Conditional use.
Conditional use, conditional use. And I just wanted to kind of read through them, to characterize the proposed development, how it fits within the conditions. So number one, it must be located within one mile of an interchange with I-287, measured along a truck route identified in the master plan circulation element. This complies. The development is about 3,500 linear feet away from the I-287 interchange. Number two would be only one principal building is permitted per lot, and its floor-area ratio shall not exceed 0.362, which the building complies with at 0.27. Number three, the said use will have access to a major collector or a higher-order street via interior access road or a non-residential street, which this building complies with. Davidson Avenue is a major collector, which we have access to via a non-residential street. Number four-
That would be Executive Drive, that would be your non-residential collector, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Number four, no frontage permitted on the scenic roadway as identified in the Franklin Township master plan. This also complies, Executive Drive and Davidson Avenue are not scenic roadways identified in the master plan. Number five, the minimum vegetated buffer is required pursuant to Schedule 6, except that the minimum buffer shall be 100 feet along a residential zone boundary. We comply with that, to the west, where we have, where the cemetery is located and the residential beyond is a residential boundary, and we have a buffer of plus or minus 190 feet. Number six, the minimum building setback from a residential zone boundary shall be 200 feet, including a residential zone boundary within a street right-of-way, except when the street right-of-way is an interstate highway. We comply with that. The building setback is 335.8 feet to the residential zone boundary to the west. Number seven, the minimum building setbacks and buffer width shall be increased by one-half foot for every foot of the building height in excess of 50 feet. That won't be an issue, we'll comply with that. The building will be plus or minus 50 feet in elevation and height. And I know one of the comments in the letter from the planner was to provide the calculation for the building height, which we will do as part of any comments or resubmissions to the board.
We could do that in the site, hoping and assuming an approval, we could do that with the site plans.
Yes, and we can include the building height calculation on the site plans. Number eight, loading or service area shall not face a residential zone, which complies that loading areas face the north towards Executive Drive, which is not a residential zone. Number nine, loading or service area shall not face a public street. This is the condition that we would not be, that we do not comply with currently, as Mr. Conchatori had stated, just because Executive Drive is considered a public street. Granted that it really does only service this property, but it is a public street. So for that effect, we do not comply with that condition, number nine, in the reevaluation of the master plan for the medium-intensity industrial use. However, again, it's been noted that we're exploring vacation of Executive Drive, and if Executive Drive was vacated for the property, then we would comply with that condition.
Apart from, let me interrupt for a minute, apart from the street vacation, from, obviously, we have planning testimony, from your engineering point of view, the front yard, the prohibition for front yard loading and parking, how does that relate when it's essentially a private, you know, a street that only serves this property, from an engineering point of view?
Yeah, from an engineering point of view, Executive Drive only really services this property, so it's not really a true and traditional front yard, so to speak. But the way that the township's code defines a front yard is if it's not facing any public street, it's considered a front yard. But realistically, it really does act as kind of a private driveway, private accessway for the property. Number 10, the off-street parking shall be provided at a minimum of one space per 1,800 gross square feet of floor space, which we comply with. The parking requirement, based on that calculation, would be 119 parking spaces, and we have 152 car parking spaces proposed. So I apologize, that was a lot of reading of conditions of a reexamination of a master plan, but I did want to go through that for the board, just to kind of demonstrate that in this reexamination of the master plan, the proposed development does fit all of the criteria, with the exception of the Executive Drive issue and having loading facing a public street.
Mr. Chair, can I just provide just a little bit of context? And I do very much appreciate you going through all of those, because, you know, the effort that the township is going through has been a significant effort. But I just want to make sure that the board understands that, you know, as of right now-
It's not part of the program.
It's not part of the program, it's not an ordinance requirement, it's not even formally, you know, it's not been an adopted element of the master plan. As of right now, it's a product of township staff, working with the consultant, working with the steering committee that was formed to put this, you know, to put this, you know, draft master plan element together. Again, I do think it is, I do appreciate him going through that. I just want the board to understand that these are not ordinance requirements yet, and they're not even a master, adopted element of the master plan yet. That we did have a community meeting, we've had a series of meetings, and we did have one about a month ago, and these conditions, I think I could say, were, I think, generally well-received. So I could say, I think the township is, you know, seems to be moving in that direction, but that's where we are. Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to put that in context, all this testimony.
And I appreciate that, and if I could just add, and I appreciate it, and even to further clarify, I think I spelled it out, but let me spell it out even more clearly. The reason we're saying that is that there is this very significant process that has occurred. It has not formally been adopted yet, you know, we think that may be the next step, but it has not. However, to have the town, you know, at great expense, kind of go through that process and come up with conclusions, here, we're going to, we're trying to create for the record that this site is particularly suitable for a warehouse. So as one of the many factors for you to consider, even though it's not an ordinance, that that process has resulted in criteria which are satisfied by this is relevant, but absolutely, it is not- But absolutely it is not binding, but it's, it's one of the factors we think is important for you to recognize as you evaluate, does this make sense? That process resulted in a, a building that is essentially this building. That's all, as one of the factors.
I'm going to interrupt your testimony.
No, thank you, Mr. Healy, because it's a very important distinction and is important to the context of the application, I think.
So as I understand this, then you've gone down to all the, all the different, I guess it's ten different factors. If you met all the ten factors, you wouldn't have to come here.
If that condition, if, if that was adopted formally through the board process and the ordinance based on the reexamination of the master plan, if all of that were true...
And we resolved this Executive Drive by way of vacation, then we would go to the planning board as a permitted conditional use, yes. If we, if we can't, we'd have to actually, and again, this is, you know, we're, again, we, we want to proceed with, with the use variance, but in the future, if, if it were something else and the street vacation for some reason is not possible, then we'd have to come before you, not for a use variance, but for a variance to that one specific condition about Executive Drive. So we'd be back here as a, a variance from that condition.
Except for the, well, I guess...
It's only that, it's only that, those couple of ones that relate to Executive Drive.
The ones that, the width of the, of the road and all those, I guess, all seeds.
Those, right, those, yes, that, that would be, but in terms of the jurisdiction, if we don't comply with the Executive Drive, if Executive Drive is not vacated, we would be back here, even with the ordinance for a variance. So we don't need to do that. Hopefully we can get approval this way and I think it's more straightforward, but yes, that, that's the answer. But if we vacate the street, we'd be at the planning board, is what the answer is.
Okay, now, I couldn't help but, two things, I couldn't help but notice that this picture is much different than the before picture.
It is.
Because this picture doesn't really show any of the surrounding properties, the way the before picture did. It was kind of like the, the, your property was a, a portion of it, but the rest of the, all of the surrounding properties appeared there. Do you have one that shows like this is only a component in a, in the larger neighborhood kind of environment or no?
I, I don't have a zoomed out version of the proposed improvements with the surrounding neighborhood.
That's too bad.
Yeah, I have the, the Exhibit A ones, yeah, I have the Exhibit A one, which is up on the screen now, but this is the obviously existing condition with the surrounding neighborhood. It's not very difficult to submit an exhibit with the proposed improvements on this aerial that shows that with the context of the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, but you're not going to be able to do it tonight.
I do not have that tonight.
But, but to, to, to answer your question, if you look at this exhibit and you see the yellow boundary, essentially everything that you see in that rendering that we had the other picture is within that yellow. So I mean, you can, you can ask, like if you had a specific question, so for example, across the street, when you put up this, the proposed, you can, it all is fitting in within the yellow, so you can see the, the landscaping in the front, Davidson, maybe you should, you know, cut.
And, and Mr. Shepherd, I, I can go a little further than that, too. I can, I can tell you that all of the proposed improvements are within all of the current improvements that are out there. What I mean by that is all the paved areas, the curb lines, everything like that, we are not extending that out any further than what exists there today. We're actually bringing that in a little bit further.
That's what...
With reduction of impervious coverage and things like that.
It's what your attorney just said a few moments ago. And that was going to be my next question. When I look at the, at the new picture of the warehouse, it, it's, it's, it seems like a, a giant space that is going to have more building coverage than the, than the old buildings did.
The, the, the foot, the footprint of the building will be larger, yes, because you have three buildings that had a twenty thousand square foot footprint, so effectively sixty thousand square feet of building area.
Yeah.
However, they have, they're four and five stories, so you multiply that by four and five, fifteen times over.
Right, I get that. So what's the, what's the footprint of the new building?
The, it's two hundred and twelve thousand five hundred square feet.
That's right, because it's just a one-story building.
That is correct.
So you're going from sixty thousand to two hundred and twelve thousand?
Yes, and the, the gross floor air, or the floor area ratio is point two-seven.
Okay.
Which is a decrease.
And then...
Decrease from existing.
From the existing condition, yes.
And what's a decrease?
The gross floor area, so...
Floor area ratio, which, how much floor area is actually there today is going down from...
Yeah, but that's because the other ones have, right, stories.
No, no, but that's still, that's the capacity of what, what's being operating, plus the, the impervious is also being decreased, yes.
Which I'll get into.
Okay, well, why don't I let you do that?
Okay. I'm gonna continue with parking first, so we will get to the coverage, I promise it's in here.
Sure.
So from a parking perspective, we're proposing a hundred and fifty-two car parking spaces located along the south of the building, which exceeds the minimum requirement of ninety-three spaces with the current zoning and exceeds the minimum requirement for what the master plan reexamination is going through right now, which that requirement would be a hundred and nineteen parking spaces. The parking will include six ADA accessible parking spaces, two of which will be van-accessible, and it'll also include seven electric vehicle parking spaces. Both the ADA and the electric vehicle parking are located on the east and west side of the, the proposed car parking areas. On the north side of the site, and north of the building, and north of the truck court, we're proposing twenty-two trailer parking spaces as well. The building will have thirty-nine loading docks, all on the north side of the building, which face Executive Drive, which I think we've talked through a, a bunch already so far. And as Mr. Conchatori had noted, we are requesting a variance from the requirement for parking drive aisles or driveways within a fifty-foot front yard setback, because we do have parking and drive aisles and driveways located within the front yards of Executive Drive and I two eighty-seven respectively. So there are parking spaces within the fifty-foot front yard setback along I two eighty-seven to the south. We have a driveway from Executive Drive, which is technically within the, the front yard setback for Executive Drive. So that's the, the purpose of requesting that variance.
If I can just interrupt for one second, just another point I think is helpful to, to kind of give some context. We have three front yards, right?
That's correct.
So those, so what, you just, it makes it a lot harder.
We have three front yards, we have Executive Drive to the north, we have Davidson Avenue to the east, and we have I two eighty-seven to the south. The, the realistic front yard, the one that is truly acts and behaves as a front yard is Davidson Avenue. From that perspective, we don't have any parking, we don't have access driveways, we don't have access drive aisles. So we are staying pretty far away from the, the Davidson Avenue front yard, which I, I think is important, just considering how Executive Drive functions and the fact that two eighty-seven is to the south of us and is not, not truly a, a natural front yard, especially considering there's anywhere between ten and fifteen feet of sep, of grade elevation separation between our site and, and I two eighty-seven below.
What was that again?
I two eighty-seven is roughly ten to fifteen feet lower than, than our site.
Ten to fifteen feet.
Yeah, so from a front yard perspective, it's a little bit odd to, to call that a front yard, but again, by the letter of the law and the ordinance, it's a public street technically, so it's considered a front yard.
So ju, just from a practical point of view, essentially, front yard, you know, a site typically has one front yard, we have three, so it's a lot harder to, to stay out of the front yard prohibitions when you have three of them. And, and what I think Alex is saying is that Davidson is really the true front yard from, from a, from a look perspective, because two eighty-seven is two eighty-seven and Executive Drive is essentially a driveway. So we've stayed away and don't have anything in that front yard, because we're looking at that as kind of the real one, I'll, I'll call it.
Go ahead.
So just continuing on from, we have a proposed concrete sidewalk along the south side of the building to service the car parking and to, and to provide, provide access to the building. You have ADA accessible routes from the proposed ADA parking spaces to the entrance source for the building.
Is the driveway, does the driveway go through the, the Davidson Avenue side? What is that, what is that? Yeah, what's that, that thing there?
Here?
No. Right on the side of, the Davidson side of the building. There we go.
The brown.
What's that thing?
Oh, that is the, that's the car access, so it's off of Executive Drive. Yeah, cars, cars will enter that driveway to park along the south side of the building. So you have separate accesses for, for car and truck. So you have the truck is the westerly driveway on Executive Drive and you have a car driveway on the easterly side for Executive Drive. We, I was just discussing the sidewalk and I think it's important relative to the site plan, because the town does have a, a requirement to provide access and sidewalks along the frontage. So we are proposing a sidewalk that comes from the building, along the east side of the building and the car access drive out to Executive Drive, goes up Executive Drive and into Davidson Avenue, and then we're proposing sidewalk all along the frontage of Davidson Avenue as well.
But that doesn't show on the picture.
It, uh, it's hard to see, I can zoom in a bit.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, but you, you can't see the, the driveway along kind of the east of the building.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And crosses Executive and then up into Davidson. I did want to talk a little bit about the, the truck court and the truck docks. We, we noted it earlier, Mr. Conchatori has noted it, we have a hundred and thirty-foot width truck court, we'll call it, but between the, the docks and the maneuvering space for the trucks. We have a hundred and thirty feet width, we're requesting a variance from the requirement where the, the width is supposed to be double the length of a vehicle that accesses the loading docks. The length of the truck that would be accessing the loading dock is seventy-three point five feet, so a hundred and forty-seven foot width is required. We're, we're proposing a hundred and thirty feet, but that a hundred and thirty feet for a, a depth of truck loading and truck maneuverability in the truck court is industry standard. Every, any industrial use asks for a hundred and thirty feet so that the trucks can, can maneuver back into the loading dock and unload. We're also, as mentioned earlier, requesting a variance for the loading space, maneuvering area within the front yard for portions of the truck court that are along Executive Drive. And I'll sketch it in here, but you can see where the cul-de-sac is, there's kind of a semicircle of, that is generated for a front yard that does creep into that truck court and that truck maneuvering space, which is driving the variance there. Mr. Conchatori had also referenced it earlier as well, but from a signage perspective, we are going to have one monument side in the northeast corner of the site, up at the corner of Executive and Davidson Avenue. It'll be set back ten feet from the property lines per code. It'll be less than a hundred and square feet, or less than a hundred, one hundred square feet as well to meet the, the township's code. And on the building, the plan that was submitted to the board showed four building signs, but we would, we will be revising that to, to go with two building signs, to not request any sign variance, meeting the area criteria, meeting the number on, on a facade and, and also the height. There's two feet of height if you have more than one tenant. If you have more than one tenant, you can have, you can have one sign on multiple facades of the building, but we would comply with the code requirement.
And so let me make it just easy in terms of, obviously we'll be submitting a site plan anyway subsequently, assuming and hoping an approval, the signage, whether it be the monument, the wall signs, would comply with the ordinance?
That is correct.
And will show that on the site plan to be submitted?
Correct. Going to just some proposed kind of environmental items for the site.
Wait.
Yes.
I want to understand better. The loading side of the building. You got loading docks there. It only looks like you have one, two, three, four, five, but that, those are just some sort of markers, right?
I'll zoom in, it's maybe a little easier to see, there's smaller squares, those are each of a loading.
Oh, okay, again, there we go.
There's stairs, you, you probably saw the stairs and thought that was the demarcation, but you have stairs for, for egress for the building.
Okay, so the trucks back in and they unload there, but there's going to be trucks that come one day and don't leave and they have to sit somewhere for the night, or maybe two days. Where do they go?
We have twenty-two truck parking spaces just to the north of the, of the truck court. So they have a few parking spaces, they need to store the truck overnight, they're not leaving, they have a, they have a parking space that they can, they can reside in.
Okay, and the, there seems to be some sort of vegetation around that, that, what is that?
If, we will, he's going to detail the extensive landscaping that will be incorporated, so I don't know if you want to jump to that?
No, I'll, I'll jump to that, so, no, it's because it's a good question and I think it's important for the character of the development. We are going to propose landscape throughout the, the entire development. We have a combination of shade trees, ornamental trees and evergreen trees, as well as shrubs proposed throughout the entire site. We'll have, I'll, I'll specify, but we have eighty-eight shade trees, thirty ornamental trees and two hundred and ninety-three evergreen trees, so we'll have four hundred and eleven trees proposed on-site. We are removing fifty trees and by calculation, the township code, we're required to replace, I believe, two hundred and ninety-five trees and we're proposing four hundred and eleven. So we're exceeding the requirement based on what we're removing from a, from a tree and landscape perspective. And we'll, we'll be using a mix of, we're preserving the existing landscaping trees everywhere possible, where we can, and kind of infilling with trees, you know, along the truck court to the north. We have landscaping along Davidson Avenue as well. There's some existing landscaping kind of tucked in the north, or the, sorry, the southeast corner that we'll be maintaining and we'll infill with some landscaping right at the street, as well as some landscaping on the opposite side of a, of a bio-retention basin that we'll have at the front of the site, which will have shrubs and plantings in there as well. And to the, to the south, I, I know it's two eighty-seven, but we'll, we'll also be proposing some trees along the south as well to help build that screen to the parking and to the west.
And that's certainly a, a better, the, the post-condition's certainly better than what's out there now.
Yes.
So maybe you can kind of, if, if that helps.
Yeah, I, I'm just, by, by nature of the, proposing the landscaping around the boundaries, it, it's certainly more lush.
How tall will the trees be?
The trees generally, like the evergreen, evergreen trees can get to forty feet high, some of the...
When you plant them, how tall they're going to be?
When they, when you plant them, they probably plant at eight feet.
Eight feet.
And then they take several years to mature.
Okay.
Right. And I, I mentioned it, but we're, we have proposed landscaping along the west as well, just considering that's residential boundary, there's a residential buffer. There is a, a lot of existing mature wooded areas there, as well as some lawn areas between our, our building and our, our access roads to the cemetery and the residential beyond, but we'll be, also be infilling with some proposed trees as well.
So that, the gray space I see, see up there toward the, the left side, where's the cemetery?
Cemetery, cemetery is along the west, I'll try and, no, it's not, right? Sketch it in here.
All right, okay, thanks.
I, I'll, I'll talk about the coverage as well now, since we're on the landscaping, because I think it's, it's important to understand the improvements from a coverage perspective. So the development proposes nine point two-nine acres of impervious coverage, which is fifty point seven percent of, of the entire lot, where sixty percent is allowed by code. This is a decrease from the existing condition by one point three-one acres. So a pretty significant reduction of impervious coverage on-site, and that really is the nature of the office buildings, kind of having a wide swath of parking and, and paved areas. So while you have a larger building footprint overall, you are reducing impervious coverage by over an acre. And you're also reducing these paved areas, which are classified as motor vehicle surface areas, which, you know, cars park on, sometimes oil leaks and things like that. We're reducing the motor vehicle surface area by four point six-two-nine acres. So a pretty significant reduction of the motor vehicle surface area as well. I, I did just want to discuss quickly, to the, to the west of the site, there is, we do have two areas of flagged wetlands. Those wetlands were flagged by our environmental consultant, they have evaluated, they will have a fifty-foot transition area that, associated with them. We are not proposing improvements within the transition areas or within the wetlands. In fact, some of those areas are permanently, they have pavement areas in the transition areas now, so we're removing that to kind of make that condition a little bit better than it exists today. And there's an existing basin for the site on the north, just north of the truck parking, that's also technically classified as a wetland, but it has no transition area. We're not proposing any changes to that basin, we're not proposing any improvements in that basin. So from a wetland perspective, we're not, we're, we're actually making the, the condition a bit better by removing some paved surfaces out of there.
And when you're talking about wetlands and DEP, and maybe it's a good spot to just mention, obviously, confirm for the record, although I said it, but you need to say it, that we do have our, our flood hazard and so the stormwater and those calculations from the DEP's point of view, we understand that the town will also be reviewing the site plan, but from that perspective, that's been resolved, maybe you can state that for the record.
That, that's correct. And before I talk about the DEP permit that we do have, from a wetland perspective, we will be filing with the DEP for a letter of interpretation. So it's a, a confirmation from the DEP that what's been flagged out on-site is accurate and they agree with our environmental consultant, so that'll be getting filed probably next week. From a flood hazard perspective...
Just on the wetlands, just to be clear for the record, but, and I know you said Just on the wetlands, just to be clear for the record, but, and I know you said it, but just so it's, it's clear, we're not going to be in any way disturbing the buffer area that's associated with the wetlands.
That is correct.
That's what I'm saying. And in fact, we're removing some, some existing pavement and other things within that area. We're removing it.
That is correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Relative to flood hazard, we have an unnamed tributary along the west property line of the site, and by DEP requirements, it drains more than 50 acres, so we are required to do a flood hazard verification and a flood hazard individual permit with the DEP, which we have filed the application and received our verification and our individual permit for flood hazard. DEP reviews the stormwater design as part of their review, as well as the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. They also review stormwater as part of their review when we submit applications. So we do have that DEP permit in hand, and from a DRCC perspective, we have a few minor comments we're still working through, but from a stormwater design perspective, they have accepted our design. Mr. Controry, I believe that concludes my direct testimony.
Okay. Those are the questions I have for this witness.
Well, I asked a couple of questions as we went along. Does anybody else on the board have any questions to ask?
I had a, I had a question for Mark. By considering this application right now, a ye, ne, or a conditional anything, does it impact the master planning by any ways?
No.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't know if the no is, is, I don't know if you want more of an explanation, but I mean, this application rests on its own merits, and frankly, won't weigh in any decision of the planning board or the council, whether to adopt the ordinance or the master plan amendment. They won't consider this.
Okay, can we go back to the, to the, do you have a light, a laser?
Laser pointer? I don't, but I'm happy to go up to the screen.
Somebody's got one, because I saw something getting.
You can go up to the screen if that helps. Use your old finger.
I want to see the, the previous, the previous picture, the one of existing conditions? That's it?
Sure.
Okay, so to the right there, that's all houses over there?
That's the hotel to the east, to the right.
To the right?
Yeah.
Which hotel? Is it the Delta?
That's the, yeah, the Delta of Marietta.
The gentleman that spoke before us, that's across the street.
Across, he's across Davidson?
Across Davidson Avenue.
Yeah, he's not across from Executive.
No, no. And, and just want you to fill them in, I mean, and you'll hear from the planner, but the area apart from the cemetery, which is actually zoned residential, and then the residence beyond the cemetery, it's all commercial and industrial surrounding the site. There is no residential.
Well, what's that to the, to the left? Isn't that residential?
That's the cemetery.
Yeah, the cemetery and then residential beyond, correct.
Okay, all right.
But there's that buffer, there's the cemetery, and it's, what'd you say, 195 feet, I think?
Yeah, the, the, we have about 195 feet of buffer, of landscaping and trees, and between existing and proposed from the, from the boundary, from this red and yellow boundary here. That, we have about 195 feet of buffer just from there. Then you have the cemetery beyond, and then you have residential.
Yeah. All right.
And again, for, and I say this with all, you know, with the master plan stuff, but in one of the criteria they talk about, of course, that's key, is residential and the buffer, and one of the things that Alex talked about was that the, the master plan conclusions, again, for just context, talked about having at least 100 feet. So we have 195 to the cemetery, and then, of course, the cemetery is itself a buffer. So just, again, just to give you context.
Yep. And there, there's a church there, right, as well, isn't there?
It's a Ukrainian cultural center to the north. I, I believe there might be a church there, I'm not 100% sure. There's a church there.
Okay. But they don't access their building from Davidson, do they?
They don't access it from Executive, they access from Davidson.
So that strip of Executive that's on our property, I'll say, I'll say it that way, but that strip of Executive, they do not access their site from that, from that strip.
Is that typo or are there two Executives?
You know what? I'm not sure. That's something we, one of the many things we need to look at for the street vacation. I, I agree, I don't know, yeah. But, but certainly that, that segment there is fully curbed, and there is no curb cut, so the Korean church cannot access their site by turning onto the Executive Drive that's on our property. That's right up against our property.
The Korean church?
Ukrainian.
Ukrainian.
Sorry, I apologize. There's a K in there, and I just automatically went to Korean instead of, I apologize.
Ukrainian.
All right. So, okay, let's, let's get back to the, the hotel.
Oh, the hotel, sorry.
It's okay. The hotel is, that's Davidson there, so it's a, it's a pretty good distance. Well, looking at that, it's a pretty good distance. How much closer is your building, new building, to Davidson than where that 1.03 building is? Oh, it's very close.
It, it's, I'll get the exact measurement for you, but it's 200, looks like 243 feet from Davidson Avenue. It does, it, it looks closer, but I'll confirm the existing building to the proposed.
But again, the, then you, then you look at the, the trees, the landscaping, you know, in terms of that. Plus, it's an existing, you know, it's across Davidson. I mean, in itself is setback. I mean, I understand the, the concept, but, you know, the, in the, in the post-condition here, you're looking at a lot of landscaping as opposed to basically a driveway where there's parking.
That, that's correct. And you'll also have, just given the grading of the site, the office building, I think is going to be a set a few feet higher than when this building will be set. This building will be set about six feet below the Davidson Avenue right away. I believe Davidson Avenue is at elevation 68, and the finished floor of the building's at elevation 62. So there will be a little bit of a drop from the exist, what's existing buildings to the, to the proposed.
And will the, will that drop also be the same drop for the truck parking and the car parking, or will that be higher?
That'll be very similar. It should be at or below.
Okay.
Because the, the loading bays will be a bit lower than the finished floor of the, finished floor of the, the building, just based on, you have a four-foot differential from the trucks back up to get into the loading bays, so that the trucks will actually be sitting four feet lower.
All right, that's all the questions I have. If no one else on the board has any additional questions, I'm going to open thi-
Just a few questions.
Sure.
The, there's a gas pipeline to the rear of the property. Is that correct? What's the distance, what's the setback from that pipeline to the building?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Okay, you could do that. Also, in the rear of the property, the existing situation, I should say, compared to the existing situation in terms of the curb line and lawn, et cetera, are you, is there going to be any disturbance closer to the stream than currently exists?
No. We're actually, we're removing pavement from the rear of the properties. We're actually setting that back further than what exists today.
Okay, what about disturbance in the form of grading or tree removal? Is any of that going to be closer to the stream than, than the curb line?
No.
Okay. The curb line, so getting to 287, kind of similar question for 287. And I'm just going to frame the question a little bit, because I, you know, I'll, I'll, you know, offer an opinion that I think differs than what, than what you've heard. In my opinion, the, the front yard from 287 is important. You know, I know it's an interstate, but if you have hundreds of thousands of people traversing, there's no other road in Franklin where you're going to have more people seeing the building, and that is, you know, essentially the, kind of the gateway to the township. So, and we have had other applications along 287, and we've treated that frontage with some importance. So with, so with that, I'll frame that question. There is a curb line near your front property line along 287 that has parking in it. Are you going any closer to 287 with this curb line? Or are you moving back? How's the treatment along 287 going to differ than the current situation?
Yeah, we're moving back. I don't have the exact distance, but we are moving further away from a curb line for 287, and we're also going to be proposing some plantings between the curb line and 287, the property line for 287.
Okay. And then to the, when you, and when you look at the aerial photos, you see there's, you know, predominantly within the right-of-way of 287, but I think going into your site a little bit, there's, you know, good amount of vegetation. Are you removing any of that?
No.
Okay. And if you can get the, the pipeline question at some point.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
That's all I have.
And obviously, with the site plan going to have to be submitted, that'll obviously-
Well, it would be, it'd be a variance, so if, if, I mean, I don't think you have a variance condition, I think you exceed it.
I'll get the distance for you, Mr. Healy.
For the board to know, since it would be a variance condition if it-
Understood, okay.
I'll confirm the distance for you, Mr. Healy. It's no problem.
Okay, so I think that the board has asked all their questions. If a member of the public would like to ask questions of this witness about what he testified to.
I get it now.
Good.
And actually, Mr. Chairman, I just opened up my screen, and I got the figure right, right, right here. Your plans say that the building corner to existing gas pipeline is 213.6 feet. So that's what's on the plan, so, and the requirement is 100, so you vastly exceed it. I just happened to open to it.
Thank you.
I answered my own question, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I, I get it, so I'll ask individual questions. Appreciate that. So on this picture, or on the current site, there is only one access to the parking lot to the three existing buildings. Is that correct? Sure, I'm sorry.
You can pull it out and hold on to it.
No, I'm good. Currently, I think there's only one access to the parking lot at the current site.
There are three accesses, one to each of the buildings off of Executive.
Okay. So you're, with, in the new proposal, you're planning on moving that new car driveway closer to Davidson Avenue?
Uh, yes.
Right? Okay. Which will, again, have 24-hour, seven-day-a-week traffic where currently those buildings-
That's really accurate, no. I mean, there's cars, there's employees, once they come, they park, but, you know.
Executive Drive is a public road, and I don't know if there's what the town ordinance is on parking on town streets overnight. Is that, that's not allowed? And like, right now, Executive Drive is town-owned and managed. There is no overlight, overnight parking allowed on that street? Mike?
Is, if the question is, will we be parking on Executive Drive? The answer is no, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I'm asking that trucks that don't have space in your existing over, overage parking spot for those trucks, will they be allowed to park on Executive Drive if there's not enough space?
No.
No.
Okay. Because obviously, from a, from a site, that's not-
I understand. No, I, I get it. Sure, sure, certainly. But no, that wouldn't be, that's, that's not how it's designed, and that would not be-
And then, you know, you can see where the hotel is, right? And all that green space between those two white buildings is my backyard. I have an outdoor pool that really overlooks Davidson Avenue, and then I have a lot of, I have a fence line that goes around my parking lot that butts up against Davidson Avenue. Obviously, our concern is where Executive Drive and all those trucks coming in and out of Executive Drive is really going to be, you know, those trucks are going to be pointing right at the hotel. Right? So that's, that's obviously a concern from us, from a noise and traffic standpoint, especially on the overnights, right? When people are trying to rest and sleep in a hotel. I already have enough issues with 287. You know, that's a big concern for us from a business standpoint, right? So I noticed on your other plan that the, the buffer zone in the back of the property is a lot bigger from the cemetery and, than the private homes beyond the cemetery, but very small buffer zone in the front of the building.
That's also a function of the stream, and, you know, those are things that we have to respect, and that's also why.
So there's no opportunity to push that building further back off of Davidson Avenue?
No, and we do meet the criteria from a setback perspective from Davidson Avenue, and additionally, we are going to be infilling and proposing a pretty solid tree line. And we're going to do that along Davidson Avenue, and then we're going to do that again along the car driveway to help screen the, the loading operations and the building from Davidson Avenue.
Because all 39 bays are on that side of the building, correct?
Facing Executive Drive.
Right, facing Executive Drive. So, you know, even though there might not be truck activity in and out of Executive Drive, there is a lot of maneuvering going along, going along, going throughout the loading docks of trucks in and out to make room for, for new deliveries coming in the morning and that kind of thing. So obviously, just going back to my point of noise congestion throughout the course of the day, we're currently, in the current setup, those buildings are usually empty during the, during the weekend. And that's really our, our main concern is more the weekend business, that, and getting that changed is a big issue for us, going from really dormant on the weekends to now activity 24 hours, seven days a week.
Great job on the questions this time.
Thank you.
You do.
Okay, anything else?
No, I think that's all we have for this witness. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Do you want to take a break, or should I call my next?
I think I'd like to take a break. 10-minute break. Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Can we have your next witness, please?
Yes, Claudio Breda.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board's truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Sure. Claudio Breda, that's B-R-E-D-A.
Thank you.
Mr. Breda, can you provide the board with a brief summary of your qualifications as to architecture and your experience appearing before boards, including boards in Franklin?
Sure. I have a bachelor's in architecture, graduated from Pratt Institute, and I've been in the field of architecture for roughly 23 years now, and I have a license in New Jersey as well, several other states here on the East Coast, and I've appeared before this board, as well as many other boards in the state of New Jersey. As a matter of fact, I see some new faces.
And is your license still active and current?
Yes, it is.
Okay, then we'll accept you as an architect. Thank you, thank you.
Similar to what I did for the engineering testimony, Mr. Breda, let's make this simple, and why don't you fill the board in on, on your perspective as an architect on the project, the building, and the things that they would find relevant for purposes of our application tonight?
Sure, so I'll just start off with the, the floor plan, as you can see here.
And we'll mark that as A3, I believe, right? Brian? Yes, thank you.
So as, as noted earlier, this will be for a warehouse. The overall length is 850 feet with a depth of 250 feet. As Mr. Lomé noted earlier, we have the 39 dock doors here facing north, which is the Executive Drive, with two drive-in ramps, which is essentially used for smaller box trucks or vans to come into the building for loading. On plan south, this is essentially what's facing Route 287. As Mr. Burns noted, ideally, this will be for a single tenant, but we are accommodating some flexibility for up to three tenants. You can see here the darker shades here, again, facing 287, this is intended to be potential office spaces. Again, you can see here the typical grid line, which is pretty typical, our industry standard for warehouses to make a deficient racking system, as Mr. Burns noted earlier. Here on the northwest corner of the building, you see two spaces here, this is for utilities, one will be for electrical, and the other one will be for the, the fire pump. The entire building-
The fire pump?
Yes, fire pump for the sprinkler system.
Oh, okay.
So then, all the exterior walls are tilt-up concrete, and they'll be painted, which are shown on the upcoming slides. And you can see here, probably hard to tell, but I know that was one of the questions that was brought, some of the egress points. Again, we have a difference in elevation between the finished floor and the truck base, is the foot, foot difference, hence why you see here, it's these stairwells for egress. So that's the floor, floor plan. This is just a quick overview of the roof. We're pitching the roof both north and south.
A4.
So essentially, two slopes. So all the water will be draining towards Executive Drive 50%, and the other 50% will be draining towards 287.
Is there any collection? Any collection points? Is there any collection, any collection points?
Yeah, there, there'll be multiple liters coming along the, the building, that'll go to the stormwater system.
Okay, and just to confirm, the construction of the roof will be force solar ready, correct?
That's correct, yes, you can see here, this little square, this really is, the roof hatch is for access, which I forgot to mention, but you can see here, the, on the utility rooms has a shipladder leading up to the roof for the roof access, so here is the exterior elevations, so-
A5.
The north elevation is really where we have all our dock doors, is facing Executive Drive, as I noted, the exterior walls are all painted concrete, throughout the building, we essentially broke up the height with the darker tone gray and then the lighter gray, just to break up the scale of the height, essentially, this is a wainscote, and if you will, similar to what you have here in the room, just to break up the height, we also, the main facade, if you will, that's facing 287, we also broke, broke up the rhythm, excuse me, with these recesses, which essentially act as pilasters, is really just to break, break up the rhythm of the, the building, to break up the mass, you can see here the three different office components, as I noted earlier on the floor plan, which has these gradient shades, starting with the dark blue going all the way up to a lighter, essentially white at the top of the roof, but, again, this is really the, the office component, again, giving the flexibility for up to three tenants.
Up to three what?
Tenants.
Tenants, okay.
I know the question came up earlier today, what was the, the height of the building, so you can see here, cross-section of the building, as Mr. Burns noted earlier, we're shooting for a clear height of 40 feet to the underside of the, the roof choice, from the finished floor to the top of a parapet, we have 45 feet, and you can see here that the various colors that the concrete will be painted with, which is essentially the, the branding colors of IDI Logistics, and that's really the last one, and then I'll just end with the perspective of our rendering.
This is A6.
So this is essentially a view looking from southwest, which is, I guess, intersection of 287 and Davidson, you can see here the, the pilasters I mentioned before, which actually recess, just to break up the rhythm, obviously, some clear story windows above, just to bring some natural light into the warehouse, and this is just further back, you can see the overall scale of the building.
Okay, is that it?
That is it.
Okay, that was the questions I have for Mr. Brede.
Just to be clear, though, this, this rendering, this, you're not at the corner of 287 and Davidson, this, you would be clearly on the site.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure the board was aware that this is not looming over the road, I mean, it's setback a few hundred-
It's, it's on that corner.
It's setback a few hundred feet.
I'm just trying to give some context.
Yes, yes.
And so, this, this side that we're looking at here, this is the side where if there was a window, you'd be looking out at 287?
Right, this window over here, yes, faces 287.
Okay, all, in fact, well, right.
All of it faces 287.
So, I, as, I guess my biggest problem with this project is that, is that it's a concrete box, you have absolutely no variation in the, the walls from the point of view of depth or anything, and it, it's, it's hard for me to understand what you're planning on doing as far as painting it is concerned, because I see you've got a little, kind of like a, a little design at this corner, but the rest of it is just monolithic concrete box, and it's, it's not pretty, now, obviously, that doesn't really go to the question that we're dealing with tonight, which is, you know, use variance issues, but, it's, I, I think you can do better, because you're basically pouring a wall that's four feet high, it would seem to me that you could, you know, you could have some sort of variation in, in what you're, what you're, what you're building there, and there's none, now, maybe that's because you're in an industry where that's accepted everywhere, but I'm not really too excited about that, can you explain to me why you made it look the way it looks?
Well, again, yes, again, this is industry standard, right, tilt-up concrete for warehouses, and the colors, to answer your point, is really the, the colors of IDI Logistics and their branding, can we change them? Yes, we could change them.
Well, the color, I don't think he's, if I can characterize-
I've got two things, I got color as one, and number two is just the, a variation in the surface.
Right, now, the color is, and I, and I don't mean it, you know, the color is, IDI's color, so those wouldn't change, but you're saying to do something else to add-
They could paint the whole, you could paint the whole building.
I'm not talking about changing the color, he's talking about doing-
Yeah, and, and the variation, as I noted, again, this is a typical wall facing 287, which was just the perspective I had before, you can see here, the panels do step back just to create some variation in some shadow lines, which is probably hard to depict there, but you can see how they actually step back, so again, we're trying to break up the monolithic rhythm of, of the facade.
It's not a rhythm.
If we could, if I can interrupt for a minute, and, and obviously, Mr. Burns has still sworn in, but he has something I think is relevant to add as it relates to the Davidson project that we approved at the planning board last year.
Yeah, so, shame on us, because there were similar comments from the planning board during Davidson, so what we had agreed to do is, and I'm, I'm not sure, Claudio, if you remember exactly, but we agreed to add basically blue stripes throughout, to kind of break up the, the gray essentially, which would make it more aesthetically pleasing, do, I don't know if you recall the exact details?
Yeah, I provided testimony for that as well.
So, if, if it pleases the board, we would certainly agree to do something like that to improve the aesthetic of the building, and in terms of the concrete box, just one comment I would make, I mean, generally speaking, ultimately, what's happening in these buildings is we're-
They're racked, right.
We're racked, you're storing things, so, buildings that have too much glass, or if you had glass facade throughout the, the building, it becomes a security concern, and tenants don't want to locate in the building, so that's generally why they are built the way they are built, and then you'll, you'll see there are windows at the, closer to the top of the building, clear story windows, to provide natural light, but they're higher up, again, for security purposes.
But certainly, I, I think the takeaway is that, that certainly, as, as Mr. Burns just indicated, we can certainly, between now and, it sounds like we're gonna be back on another night-
We are.
We can certainly, you know, evaluate that and provide some more detail for you, we, we hear you, and IDI addresses comments, so we'll, we will evaluate that and, and come back with something, something that was amenable to, for example, not that it has to be for you two, but was amenable to the planning board for a building very similar, so, that's, shame on us for, for not thinking of that ahead of time, but we will, we will take care of that.
My, my question to you guys is, is, you know, if you're gonna stay in a hotel room, I just wondered what, you know, would you want to see that out your window? And whatever we can do to make it-
Yeah, and I-
Oh, there is landscaping.
I'm, I'm trying to kind of answer that in a way that, that doesn't come off in a way that I don't want to come off, but, obviously, you know, there is uses that are allowed in the zoning ordinance in this, so this isn't about a hotel, you know, and, and I don't mean in a bad way-
I understand.
We spoke, you know, it, it, it's about, you know, a hotel that was purchased, you know, 287's right there, I mean, there's a certain level of, of understanding that conditions are conditions, you know, and, and so certainly, it's understood, I think it's absolutely essential that we're gonna go back and, and do something to improve the aesthetics of this, that's, that's a given, it's not really a matter of when I wake up in a hotel room, what I'm looking at, you know, that kind of thing, so, so that, that's all I would say, but I hear you, but there's a point.
And, and I would just add, I mean, at the end of the day, I certainly prefer to look at a, a warehouse that's providing value to a community in a township versus empty office buildings, which is what it is, and quite frankly, what it will likely stay unless a higher and better use is allowed to be developed here.
Yeah, I would just like to kind of echo the same sentiment, obviously, we're here for a use variance, and it is a warehouse, understandable, but some, some consideration to the facade along Davidson, I think, would be very much appreciated by the community, and I'll leave at that, but I did have one question for the architect.
Understood.
In, in terms of the HVAC equipment, was it all gonna be roof-mounted, and would it be screened?
Yes, there will be some roof equipment, but again, given the height of the building, and they're gonna be further back from the parapet line, they'll be out of sight, no, no one will be able to see them.
Okay, anything else for this witness?
Since there's no additional questions from the board, I'm gonna open this witness's testimony to the public, if someone would like to come and ask Claudio any questions about his testimony, they can do so now, having seen no one move to the podium, I'm gonna close this witness's testimony, and this will be the last witness for tonight.
Okay, so we should confirm for the record, so we can announce when, when we'd be coming back?
Are all of your professionals, they can, they can't do the April 17th?
Unfortunately, we would have loved to, but my two main witnesses, both are not available on April 17th.
So, May 8th was the, the next time?
The next soonest would be the one we would do, yes.
I'm just making sure it's May, yeah, May 8th is okay?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so then, IDI Logistics ZBA 2400010 will be carried to May 8th at 7:30 PM here at 475 Demont Lane, starting at 7:30, I would need a, an extension date from you, if you could just send an email, it'd be fine.
I will do that, absolutely, yes.
Okay?
Yes, thank you, everyone, and we'll see you on May 8th.
Move to adjourn, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi.